The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Peter? Leave us tonight?
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, oh, let me put this down. This time I'd ask for any public comment. Please come up to the podium and state your name. And if you're a student, don't, just your name, no address. And you have five minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Christina Germano and I'm a sophomore at Farmington High School. I have been a Girl Scout since kindergarten and I have already earned my bronze and silver awards. I'm here today because I would like to take this opportunity to speak to you about my Gold Award event planned on February 6th, 2016, at the Farmington Public Library in the community room from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The main idea of this project was to raise awareness of how important our site is. Seeing well can help everyone regardless of age. In infancy, it helps in the brain development. During school years, it helps academically, socially, and athletically, and later in life, allowing for independence and enjoyment of life. So my project issue was to address the need of the local, address the need of the local community in providing affordable eyewear to their children and to ensure that they achieve their full potential. In speaking with different members of the community, I have discovered that many families cannot afford to purchase new glasses for their children or for themselves as often as possible, as often as needed, putting off the purchase for as long as possible. Since children outgrow their eyeglasses so fast, families especially with multiple children that wear glasses find themselves in a difficult situation having to choose to, for their child to wear a pair with an older prescription or face financial burdens. Since children with uncorrected vision or other health problems face many obstacles in life in areas such as academics, athletics, and socially, I felt that it was a worthwhile project. At the same time, I discovered that there are members of our community that have glasses that they or their children no longer use because they have outgrown them or the prescriptions have changed, and they are willing to share them with those that need them. My project idea is called Share Spare Eyewear for Every Child. I envision obtaining donations of used eyeglasses that once collected can be distributed to those that need them free of charge. Dr. Ryan Trimble from Union Eye Works accepted that challenge. The drive with the help of the, with the help of the Unionville Lions Club, members of the Unionville and Farmington communities, including school families from the six local schools and St. Mary's Church parishioners, brought in approximately 500 pairs of eyeglasses and about 100 eyeglass cases. With the help of Dr. Trimble, the prescriptions were read, database created, and an event planned at the Farmington Community Room for February 6th, 2016, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There are, there, the eyeglasses are to be dispensed to those that need them. The original project focused on the needs of children such, since correction of vision can be the child's best possible to for successful learning. However, during further research, I discovered that there's also a great need for updated eyewear among adults and especially within the senior community. Since our collection included a large amount of adult glasses, I noticed, I noted an area of opportunity and now can offer everyone the possibility to be able to benefit from the project. The project was thus renamed Share Spare Eyewear for Everyone. Everyone in the community, regardless of age, is encouraged to arrive with a prescription. However, Dr. Trimble offered to provide a free screening for those that do not have an updated prescription. Also, should we be unable to match the individual with a pair from our database, Dr. Trimble will set up an appointment for the, for an office visit at a later date and will provide a pair of eyeglasses for the patient at a great discount. In conclusion, I would like to thank the Lions Club, St. Mary's Church Parishioners, the family and students and families from the six local schools, and especially Dr. Ryan Trimble for their help in completion of my project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a great opportunity for people in our community that you've, that you've given them. So, thank you very much for what you've done. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we waive the rules of procedure to add an item to the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Okay. I move that we add as agenda item D4, an appointment of a Board of Education representative to the Farmington High School Building Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Okay. Um, consideration of special topics. D1.
Madam Chair, I move to set a public hearing on February 9th, 2016, at 7:15 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers for the purchase of 8885 South Ridge Road, Lot 7, and 8809, Lot 6A B, Settlement Road owned by October 24, Inc. It's approximately 107.1 acres, for a purchase price of $1,225,000, subject to receipt of an acceptable Phase 1 environmental site assessment report and subject to due diligence, including but not limited to title search and to authorize the town manager to sign a purchase agreement for this acquisition, and to authorize the town manager to submit a grant application under the State Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program prior to completing the purchase of this property.
Second.
Would you like to speak to it, or Kathy?
This, uh, this property, again, we're just setting the public hearing tonight. We'll have the public hearing at our next meeting, but you do have a map and this property is located in the southeastern corner of town and is part of a linkage of more than 700 acres of continuous woodland within the town of Farmington, in addition to several hundred acres to the south in Plainville. Um, and we just have the timeline there, and a grant round was, has been announced. The deadline for the grant application has been set for February 2nd, 2016, with the maximum grant of 65% of value or $796,250 based on the proposed acquisition price. The state, however, has often capped the grants at approximately $500,000. And if this, the council decides to acquire this piece of property, we have been working on the grant and would be applying under this grant funding.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. D2.
I move to consider the attached Town of Farmington Strategic Plan Town Manager Goals.
Second.
Kathy?
As you know, it's been the Town's Council practice to amend the strategic plan or my goals at the beginning of each Town Council two-year term. So attached are the Town Manager's Goals last adopted in December of 2014, and we amended them in July of 2015 after the completion of the townwide survey, along with my suggested goal modifications. I thought tonight, as we discussed, would be a discussion of the proposed goals, and in the past, the Town Council has added or deleted specific Town Manager Goals to the strategic plan if they felt, if they wanted to. And then it was thought that we would have no action on this tonight, and this would be back on the February council meeting for an action item. And what we've done in the past is that we've gone through the goals. If there's anything right away that we wanted to delete, we've done that, where we may mention that we were going to do it at the next meeting. And then if there were goals that people had, they could talk about it tonight, and I could come up with the goal to put in for the February meeting. If there was not, then you'd see something similar to this at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and just to, to remind everyone, this was amended July 15th, 2015. Generally, when we've done this, it's been a year since we've had the, usually it's in January, so this has really been pretty current, so. Kathy? So I'm just going to have our town manager go through this and just talk about the changes. We'll go through page by page. So if you have any question to ask at that point, okay? Go ahead.
Uh, 2.1 on, on page, page 12, is really just edits that I have been in discussion with our new town planner, just to get it more up to date, some modifications to the goal. So that's what 2.1 is, the desired outcomes and the deliverables. On page 13, 2.2, this is again talking with the town, new town planner, and just to, I recommend modification to the goal that more accurately describes the deliverable. That's for desired outcome and for the deliverable. In the 2016-18 goals, all I did on number, goal number one, was I modified the goal and I changed the name of the goal. So instead of the Private Partner Land Initiative Committee, it's now just the Gateway Committee. So I am recommending that we continue with our Gateway Committee. On goal number two is a new goal. I thought that we should have that, it's part of the Gateway Committee, but I thought that we should keep that on the forefront, that when the Parsons property, after the project is completed by the state of Connecticut, we've talked about acquiring that piece of property. We did have the, our state representatives have the land conveyance and it is, we have the first right of refusal to it. So that will, I, prepare for the acquisition of it. So I thought it was appropriate. It will take some work, and it's also an important, um, goal, I thought, so that's why I recommended adding it as a separate goal.
Okay. Just quick question. Kathy, would it be helpful to you to add for number one, after staffing and funding? To provide, it's provide needed support to ensure the Gateway Committee moves forward and receives the appropriate staffing and funding?
I, again, yeah, sure. That doesn't hurt. I always think of a, any goal here, I think that should be funded, that usually comes with funding, but I have no problem with that, whatever everyone wants.
Yeah, that's fine.
Fine.
I mean, I think that does sum with it.
Yeah, right. Good.
In regards to, in regards to the Parsons property, who owns it now? Is it fully owned?
By the state.
By the state? So there's not a little portion of it? It's all one parcel?
Yeah, it's all one, yeah, it's the state. Yep.
So, uh, one concern I had on this, when we began this process, we were really looking at many places in town to do this sort of concentrated planning on. And I wholly agree that the Gateway Project is now focused in, as it should be, in the center, but there were other places in mind, and I wouldn't want to lose that.
Yeah. You know what? We should probably, because we renamed it the Gateway, but honestly, our committee's now looking at a new set of properties. So I think the Gateway is probably not the correct name, so maybe when we meet, our committee should come up with a new name, and then we'll put the new name in, because it's really not just the Gateway anymore.
Right, but so, so the intent of this goal is to do more than just Farmington Center, but the other areas in town?
Absolutely.
John, we're already looking into what the next step would be. We just, you're right, we're always struggling with a name for that particular committee.
This was much better than the other one.
The other one took a day to read, so it's.
But absolutely, our intent is, yeah, I'll just, about a name change again.
Never-ending.
Make sure this.
Gateway to the Future.
The old, the old name was filled with a lot of poppycock.
Yes, it was, absolutely. Kathy, that was. Um, goal number three is, I'm recommending that we continue with goal number three, but just modify it on, because the Sewer Road Backage Project is, I crossed that out because that, that is complete. 2160 is the, the road project. We've just finished up the Backage Road project, so I crossed that out. So again, this is going to be an important goal. Again, you can see, we're going to have the road project on Route 4, the Rails to Trails project, the New Britain Avenue project, the Route 4 Corridor Study project, and the South Road Reconstruction project, so a lot going on.
Amy, go ahead.
Um, I know the last thing you need is another, two things on here, but I just wanted to at least put these out there. We've talked at length about exploring signage, new signage on 84 to minimize the, the use of 39, Exit 39, and maybe better utilize the other exits. So I don't know if we want to put that in.
We got it.
We got it?
We got it.
Good job! Though we don't even need?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yep, we, I, based on our meetings, we haven't had a Gateway meeting to announce it, but we got approval for the new signs.
Excellent.
It's a project.
Perfect. And then the other thing, and again, I don't know if we want to put it in here yet, but as, as development continues around Yukon, I think we all foresee traffic issues growing. Maybe something, at least starting a dialogue with our state reps and state senators as to potentially other exits off of 84, not, I just think we need to look at, fast forward five or 10 years down the road, are there other options that will help Farmington? Because I feel like we're going to take the brunt of the traffic as, as things around Yukon grow.
Isn't there something underway right now?
Yeah, something, yeah, the South Road Corridor Study Project, that's what CROG is doing right now. Yep, that's what we're involved in.
Okay. And that would include new exits or additional exits?
It's the whole area that we're looking at. We've tried to push the first time around with Yukon for the new exits and some different things. We weren't very successful, but this corridor project is still going to be our opportunity to, they're going to look at the whole area.
Okay. And you know, I think with that in mind, when we have our legislators here next month, we should talk to them and make sure they're, we, they know that it's on our, on our, in our eyesight to do that, and make sure that that still stays part of the, the project.
Right. Because if we're going to sort of agree to open this up to the state, we need some help. Otherwise, it's, it's going to tumble that area.
Number four is a, a new goal that I'm recommending, is this is a work with the Connecticut Department of Transportation to facilitate the construction of improvements to Route 4, I mean Route 10 at Route 4, including improvements to the northbound right turn lane and the south for, southbound left turn lane, which were originally proposed as part of State Project 51260. So this is down at the intersection, so the 51260 is our regular road project, the Route 4 project. So if you come down or coming out of town, at Route 4 and Route 10, they're out at those intersections, were cut out of the project, and one of the ones, especially if you're coming down Route 4, Route 10 from Ms. Porter School in that direction, and you're making a turn onto Route 4, uh, so you're going on to Route 4, right-hand turn.
Right, okay.
Right-hand turn. There is, um, that's all designed and ready to go, and we, the state had, they, they cut a lot of parts out of the project, so they only took it that far. And I think that we should really actively campaign to get that funding back in, and it could either be through another state project, but not 20 years down the line, or another type of funding source through the state. And that's one of the things that has been recommended, that through our High Street Traffic Review of the Village Center, they brought that back to our attention and said, listen, making these improvements at that intersection is really going to help the village traffic in general. And it's, 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 it's costly, but it's not that, that costly, and it's, it's been designed. It's just the question of us, again, getting back into the queue, talking to our representatives when they come, and finding different funding sources to get that, and also get it done almost right after or during the time when this Route 4 project is going on.
Kathy, what's the basic design? Because I have no.
It's, again, and, uh, my understanding of, so, one of the big problems is, is the queue to take the right here into lane, and so what they want to do for the flow of traffic is that they can do the flow, so you have two lanes, so you almost have three lanes going out, and people can take that right-hand lane, and so you're not backing up all the traffic on Route 10. That's one of the things. Now going on the other side of the aisle, on Route 10, coming, I can't always do west and east, but coming the other way on Route 10.
From Avon.
From Avon, coming through that way, there is again, an, an extra lane that could go in there. And then lastly, which is a little bit more difficult, those two are relatively simple, is again, looking at coming into town, having another lane, um, at the intersection, so you can take a right to go to eight, so you can do three lanes right there, but that's something to study, to have study in the future. But all of those three things were cut out of this original project. So two of them, I think, are very, very doable, and it, it's just a question of maybe not getting the funding through our normal funding source, but maybe going through a LOTSIP grant, or a CROG grant, or another one of these grants. But again, it's going to be, um, I, I think, I think it's really crucial, and we should put it on the forefront to really campaign, talk to our legislative people, and not get back onto the queue at the end of the list.
Well, they're here for the next two years.
Right. Exactly.
Well, and this was something that was already supposed to be happening. It had been pulled back, so it's not like it's, it's a new project. This is something that is a project that was underway, so, you know.
This, this state project has changed quite a few times from their original design, and it's actually, at the very end, it really was condensed very much at the end, and it's just something I think that we've always, we've known this, but I think it needs to be a goal, and we've been focusing so much on the sewer projects, the sewer part of it, and the Backage Road, trying to get that done. I think we got to get focused again and remember this intersection and try to get that done. So that's what we were talking about. And it really has come to light more so again, when we did the High Street Study and the Village Study. They looked at all our reports and said, listen, one of the things that would really improve, um, traffic in the village in general is fixing this intersection, and it's right here in the report, let's get this back on the queue. And so that's one of the things that they said, so that's why I included it in there.
Excellent.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay.
Um, number five is the Bicycle Committee, so I'm recommending that we keep that on, on the docket, and that, again, what we talked about last week, I think they're making some significant progress on some of their goals and objectives. I do like that number, goal number six, that we move that to priority one, and it's my understanding, John, correct me if I'm wrong, I know the staff has been doing it, but they have been working again about trying to connect our existing parking lot systems to the trails, and they've been working on some of that, and, um, they, I don't know if they're done with it yet, but it's more internal, I'm not sure if it's at the goal, the committee, but I, I think that's a good goal, and it works well, so I've wanted to move that to priority one.
Yeah, you know, some of the stuff, um, one of the things that we are looking at, and we're trying to get signage for now, is to direct people from the Rails to Trails through the Highlands, to the high school, to the town hall, to the library, those sort of things. And so that'll be kind of an experiment to see, does it really help people move through? Because from that, that entrance off of the Rails to Trails, you can get not only to this whole complex, but also to the ball fields. And so we'll look at that, and then if that works out, then we'll look to different areas to see where the Rails to Trails is close to, you know, hotspots, and then we'll aim at that.
Yeah, so. And actually, I was asked to come, go to the high school last, where are we? In the fall, and listen to some conversation from some of the students, and it was in a civics class of the towns and what goes on, and, and one of the things that they, they talked about was being able to get to the high school through the Rails to Trails. And they asked a number of questions, and how can things get, get moved up, and how can things, and this is certainly something that they were asking about, so they could be coming from different areas to the high school, for after-school activities, for activities, uh, just to school too, you know? So I think this is something that's, it's great, and it's, it's something the kids have asked for too, so, it's a nice combination.
Um, new, new goal is a, a goal that I'm recommending, and it's number seven on page 15. And the chief and I have been talking quite a bit about, um, creating what I'm calling a traffic unit in the Farmington Police Department in order to increase enforcement and compliance of traffic laws, and work together with the community to address neighborhood concerns. This unit will be also responsible for managing data collection, also relevant information required by the Traffic Review Board and the Town Manager. As you know, traffic is our number one issue in the town of Farmington, and even though the police department does have enforcement and different things, it's no one's primary job, it's everyone's secondary job. So for instance, when we, I get a tremendous amount of requests for enforcement in various parts of the town. Enforcement about putting our traffic signs in, about having a police officer there, having different things. But we run our shifts that we don't have people that, we usually pull someone from somewhere else to do, to do this type of traffic work. And we really, the chief envisions having a unit, and it's, it would be a process, it wouldn't just happen overnight, but having a unit that their primary responsibility, and I'm not talking about a unit of 25 people, I'm just a, a unit, that's just like we have community policing units, we have different things. This would be under the community policing unit, and the sergeant would be on top of, a sergeant would be in charge of it. And really looking at various things, whether it's having enforcement in different areas, when we rotate the signs that go, if we, having a, possibly having a person or a police officer dedicated to it. And I'm not saying by doing this, we absolutely have to have another police officer, but it would maybe be leading to something like that. And I haven't seen the budget yet, and we haven't had our goals and objectives, but we really do have, if we, my view is, is that if we were going to have any type of expansion of services coming up in the upcoming budget, and we don't have to decide that now, this should, this would be a worthy expansion of services for the community. I think it's, it's number one in our strategic plan, and we really, I don't think it should be an after, it should be someone's responsibility, and, and setting something up. So this was kind of a goal that worked towards creating this, having some dialogue about it, and again, I feel strongly that if we're, if we're not at all interested in that, then it shouldn't be a goal at all. But if we have some interest, and then we should have it on our, our plan, so that when the budget comes, we can talk about it more, and some different things. So that's really where I'm coming from with that.
Okay. Questions about this or comments?
So, um, I had a question, but I'm going to rephrase it because of what your comments. You're looking at this as an expansion or an increase in staffing levels, as opposed to a reorganization within the police department?
Well, it's twofold. We, I, I think eventually we'd be looking at a body of people, okay? But I'm not saying because of this that we automatically are getting that. But we're also looking at some restructuring internally that maybe we'd have, we right now have a community, um, police, a, a community division where a sergeant oversees that. This traffic division or unit would be under that, that person. That, right now, let's say, when we have all these traffic jobs that take place, it's a patrol sergeant that decides who, who's filling all these positions. It's not someone's, it's not someone's job, it's not the sergeant who's in charge of a traffic division, that can look at the town as a whole and say, how many cops are here? What are we doing? And that, so there is going to be some internal kind of restructuring, but that's what the chief's working on now, that's what we're kind of trying to face out, figure out. And the thought was, is that depending on, again, how the budget goes, what our goals are, that during that time, the chief would be here to kind of explain a little bit more of what his thoughts would be. But I just wanted to get it on the plan, if that's something that we have some interest in, because I think we do internally as staff people.
Kathy, how would this relate to the Traffic Review Board, your vision of structure?
This, this person would then be a member of the Traffic Review Board, and that's good, because that's the, when, that's the, the body that gets all the different things. So they would know that, okay, we're getting questions about, you know, uh, West District Road, and that person would be sitting there, they would be responsive. But it's also, I, I envision it, again, more so, again, some more planning about it, and you're going to see in the budget coming up, the chief has put some, for more of those little traffic signs and some different things. And I think Nancy had mentioned to me, one person, what they've always said is that, you know, in Unionville, if you, they call it blocking the box, is that you've come out and you, you've gone through the red, it's green, and then it's red, and you're sitting in the middle of the intersection, and you can't.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck. In New York City, it's $350 fine.
Well, that's what someone has said, that if you had a police officer out there ticketing people for this, out of the box, blocking the box, it would stop quickly, and that, would that help the traffic flow in Unionville? But we don't, our officers, we don't have a person dedicated to doing anything like that. And so maybe you do that in one side of town, and there's a schedule, and some planning, and again, putting traffic kind of more in the forefront of what we're doing is really, I think, what, what our ideas are. So, John?
I think it's a great goal. It sounds like it's just going to put a little organization into traffic enforcement in the town, which, quite frankly, driving around town, I don't see very much traffic enforcement, such as, you know, speed enforcement or other enforcement. One question that I would have is, revenue generated from traffic enforcement, where does that revenue go? Does it go directly to the state?
The majority of it goes to the state.
And then how does it come back to us, if at all?
I don't, Joe, does this, I don't even think, does the police revenue for tickets and stuff, does any of that come back to the town of Farmington? A small portion though, right?
A small portion of the, well, any, any type of parking ticket would come back to the town that, that never leaves the town. Any moving violation goes to the state, and a portion of those come back to the town.
It's not that much, when, you know, when we do the budget, there's a revenue side, we'll show you where it comes in.
Yeah, well, that was my next question, was would we have to, you know, consider that in the budget and look at adjustments? Would we, would we expect an increase in revenue due to enforcement?
I, I would say we would see a little bit of, um, revenue, but the state takes so much of our revenue that it's not going to.
Nothing that you're going to notice. Okay. Thank you.
And that'd be good to just show us in, when you do come to it.
Right, we can show it on the revenue side, where that revenue comes in. But.
What I like about it is just how, it's just so incredibly responsive to the one
What I like about it is just how, it's just so incredibly responsive to the one thing that people continuously ask us to fix in Farmington. I mean, that's why I like it, we're not expanding into an area that's, you know, that people haven't, that didn't, you know, this came directly from our survey, you know, it's been a known problem for decades, you know, if not beyond. And I just think the responsiveness to take action and maybe have people see actual improvement. I like that.
I think one of the things that we've always, and it's not like we don't do a lot of this, we try to, it's just not their primary job, but I think because of all the state work that's been taking place on our roads over the last couple of years, in general, the town is just saturated with, with traffic. And we have to get through this hump to get some of these projects done, it's a necessary evil. But this group, and what they would be, is more in the neighborhoods, too, and just more in the neighborhoods, and because people, when they go out in the road, it's so much traffic, and then, and then they're in their own neighborhoods, people are speeding, and they want enforcement, and they want signs, it's just all right in your face, you know, that type of.
It seems like, too, we have just like hot pockets of places where people are ultra-concerned about it, like High Street right now, like right downtown Unionville, and then, you know, if the Charles House development ever gets underway, that's, you know, what I see is another potential just pocket for stress on what we have. And if this can kind of alleviate the now and the future, I think that's great.
Particularly with the other things like Unionville, where we have the turn, the turn lanes that are supposed to help.
Right.
If there's no enforcement to get people, you know, and eventually, I'll be very positive, we have that in Farmington Center as well, so, you know, we need that, so. Okay, and before we leave this one, I forgot that I had asked about, this has to do with transportation, so I wanted to go back to page 14. I think that, and Kathy, you tell me, but I think that that's where it should go, but it has to do with this, to continue to evaluate potential and location of an additional river crossing with the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation to alleviate traffic in the town centers. This is, has to do with a possibility of a bridge at some point, and I'm not, my thought when I talked to Kathy about this was not additional funds for anything, but just to give us actually a, an actual place to talk to our legislators. Again, it's specifically a goal of looking at how we can alleviate traffic, and that might be a possibility as we go through the town, and we go through possibly getting more funds from the state if at some point with transportation, so, so that was my thought with this, is just getting it on our goal right now, but not to, not with the funds. So I did talk to her about, you know, that wasn't my intention, was to use a lot of money or staff, but to bring it on the forefront, that this is something that we want to see, if it's possible, again.
Well, I mean, I think it's appropriate, based on the fact that I have, again, been hearing more about another crossing from people. And if we're going to spend any amount of time looking at that, which I think we should, and I think Russ always does with CROG, and what's going on, if we're going to talk about it, I think to evaluate, it should be on a goal, because we're going to spend time, I don't think it's going to be a tremendous amount of time, but it should be there as a document, so that people, because I have heard, people have asked, and asked me, is the council going to be doing anything with the, you know, the governor's initiatives with transportation and all this, is there any funding for something like this? So I think evaluating any kind of potential for this, and I don't know if this is a dream, or is it something that could actually happen? And that's one of the things I think we should look at, is to see if there's ever, if there is a true potential that we could have another crossing.
Thank you. Sixteen.
Page sixteen, that goal is the Irving Parking Lot, Irving Gate Parking Lot, and I took that off because it was completed. Goal eight, I just recommend modifying that, because last year we designed the sidewalks from Deco Place to Keane Place, and this year we're going to construct them. So it's just from design to construct. Goal number nine, I just added this one in, this is a new goal, and that, prepare for the 10-year rewrite of the Plan of Conservation Development, starting in 2017, and provide quarterly reports to the Town Council. I think this is a very important document that the planner and the TPZ will be working on, so I wanted to have that as a placeholder, as a goal, so you guys can get reports on how they're doing on the Plan of Conservation and Development.
And are they the ones, Kathy, they're really the ones that put this together and that developed it, and?
Yes.
Okay, so TPZ works with the planner to do that specifically?
Do that, yes, yep. And with, I think there's going to be community input to it, and some various things updated, that's what they usually do.
So before we move off that page, there's one concern I have in conjunction with the construction of the sidewalks coming down, and I think that it's a heavily trafficked area, and I totally agree with doing this project. What I'm concerned about is setting expectations in other neighborhoods, as to what's the town's responsibility is for sidewalks. You know, currently, if you're on Lovely Street, if you're on Main Street, if you're anywhere in the village, people who have sidewalks in front of their house are responsible for maintaining their own sidewalks. This is sort of a different area, in that everybody on Plainville Avenue gets absorbed that responsibility, and the town and the state have taken over that responsibility.
Not from maintaining that, to building it.
Well, they have sidewalks already.
Right, and they're going to have to continue to.
So if their sidewalks, if their sidewalks need to be maintained right now, they don't have to do it.
Okay.
We've taken that responsibility.
When you're saying maintain, you mean fix them?
Yes.
I'm thinking maintain, snowplowing.
No, no, I'm not talking, no, 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 I'm talking about fixing them.
Yep.
And so I think when we're dealing with this area, and we're doing this project, we should make it clear that this area is special, you know?
And, yeah.
And we're trying to help facilitate the, especially the wheelchair traffic that goes up and down there, and this makes this area different in terms of what the responsibilities are, as opposed to other areas.
Yes, I agree. The reason why we received the grant from the State of Connecticut is because of the population that this is serving, and that's, and that's why we got a grant. And so if another neighborhood has asked us to get a grant, it would be unlikely, because of where the location of this facility is, that they, we would be able to get a grant. But so, that's why this is special, is because of the population that it serves.
Yeah, and like I said, I support this thing, we just need to set expectations for everyone else.
On page seventeen, goal ten, is just a modification, obviously, last time we went for referendum for the water pollution control, and now we're going to begin construction of it. Number eleven, I just put to also work with the Farmington State Legislative Delegation, so it's just a modification of this goal. Goal twelve is our UConn Committee, and I recommend that we continue with the UConn Committee. Goal thirteen is some economic development goal that we have, recommend that we actively participate in the regional and state economic development activities, and I recommend that we continue with that. Goal fourteen, I just, excuse me, made a small modification, because we, this committee has been moving along, and they have had a consultant go out to that, the Patterson Park Parcel. It is 86 acres, but it's only 10 acres of usable land, that's what's been determined out there, and it seemed that having that 86 acres there was a little misleading, so I just changed it to with 10 acres of usable land. But that committee, I'm recommending they are still moving along, and I think that the staff has met with the staff of Hartford, and they're planning on having, because there's all new staff there, they're going to have another meeting with the committee, so.
That's great, because I know that when we've talked about this, Peter, you've, you've been on the committee, and now Gary, you are, but it always seems like there has to be a correction made, that, well, there are 80, there are 86 acres, but really 10, so this is.
Well, it just recently happened, after they did the study out there, so.
Goal fifteen on page twenty is our normal, our budget goal. Goal sixteen is our budget, I mean, our collective bargaining goal. Goal seventeen, I recommend, this is when we work with the different volunteer groups to promote private contributions to the town. I see that, again, in the spring, is that, I think of that as our burn building, and we're going to be constructing a burn building, so I think that goal should continue. The next goal, that was the 375th anniversary, and we completed that with our town historian last year.
Oh, it's the next 375th anniversary.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
The next goal was to amend the taxation. I put complete there, but, you know, we're having the public hearing on it at the next meeting, so I took it upon myself to put complete, but, again, it's not 100% complete. New goal eighteen, unfortunately, you all, we're going to be going through revaluation again, so we have, complete the revaluation of all real property located within the limits of town, including the physical inspection of at least 50% of the commercial properties for the inclusion in the October 1st, 2017 grant list, report to the Town Council. So budgetarily, we're not going to feel the revale this year, the budget coming up that we're going into, it'll be the next budget, but you're going to see a considerable amount of money being, having on the budget for the capital, requesting to get, you know, as always, it costs a lot of money to go through a revale, so you're going to see that over the next couple of years.
Talk about the revale. One of the things that came out anecdotally, and it was, we saw it because there was a donation to the town of a small piece of property over in Oakland Gardens. And it was just after revaluation, and the reval, the evaluation from the town was that the property's worth something, somewhere near $70,000. And in fact, when we did the appraisal on it, it came out like, I think it was something like five.
Right.
And it was such a drastic thing, and it would have, I would have thought that that sort of evaluation could almost be done on paper. I mean, if you have an area that's in a wetlands that's too small to build on, it's probably not worth $70,000. So I'm not sure, certainly as part of this revaluation, we should take a look at that sort of concern, and make sure our evaluators are looking at that.
Yeah, it's, I agree with you 100%. Unfortunately, the revaluation's not a perfect process, it's not a perfect process. And so, you know, we, this is now, we're doing the physical inspections, then you don't have, you, some of them you don't have, some years you don't have to do physical inspections, some you do, so, but I agree, and we are going to be going out for bids for revaluation companies and things like that. So I think now we have some different areas, and also we have a new assessor with some fresh eyes on things, too, so not that, you know, I think that's different, just to have a fresh look at some of this stuff, so. Goal nineteen is our yearly goal to meet with our delegation, which I think is beneficial. Goal twenty is really my day-to-day operations of managing the departments, and what the departments are doing. The goal after twenty, I took it out to conduct a review of the ordinances. I took that out, I wrote complete and ongoing. We always kind, we always have a review of ordinances, but if you remember when I put it on, there was quite a few that I wanted to update, and over this course of the year, we have a bunch of public hearings next month, and we, I think we basically have gone through it once, and we'll always have it on, but I don't, I don't feel I need to have it as a goal, per se, but we always are reviewing our ordinances. Twenty-one is a yearly report of the Town Manager to give to the council. Goal number twenty-two is a new goal, and that's our Farmington High School Building Committee, and you guys appointed a building committee at its January 12th meeting, so this will be a large goal, goal twenty-two. Goal twenty-three is a modified goal, if you remember, I think at the last meeting, this has to do with the EMS, and so this is the next process, it's a long goal, but I just put it in what we approved, so I just cut and paste. But this is the next step of trying to get our PSAs. So we've come this far, we're going to keep on going with this goal. Number twenty-four is our webpage, and I think we're coming to, pretty soon to some conclusion on that goal, so I recommend that we continue that until we complete that. Twenty-five is, again, providing this day-to-day with the councils, part of my, my job. Twenty-six is about seeking, making sure that we're keeping public awareness of social service offerings, that came out of the strategic plan, and I think that we should keep that as a goal, that, and we try to, I've been trying to have managers' reports and different things that have awareness for social services. Goal twenty-seven is our green goal, and so I think the Green Committee is still moving forward, and I kept that one in. Okay, so now, the new goal before on page twenty-seven is town staff to develop a policy for Town Council approval, which will include the ratio of supported funding for recreation versus user fees. I have a quick PowerPoint on that goal, that I thought maybe we'd go through, and you also have the policy. Eric, if you want to, like, dim the lights for me a little bit? So what this is, is a draft policy, and it's a recreational operation funding policy. And the purpose of this policy is to provide a general guidelines for funding of recreation in the town of Farmington. And John, I think, was on the committee, and if you remember, we've been trying to, we've been working on this for many years, and we're finally have come, I think, to a point where I'm recommending a policy. What funds do we currently have? Right now, we have the General Fund, which is what we refer to as our operating budget. We have the Recreation Fund, which is a special service fund, and we have a Golf Course Fund, which is a special revenue fund. The General Fund is supported by taxpayer dollars. The Recreation Fund is supported by recreational user fees. And the Golf Course Fund is supported by golf course fees. How, how does the General Fund support recreation currently? How that happens is the General Fund supports the maintenance of supplies, the utility cost, the office supplies, the personnel and fringe benefits of full-time recreational employees, and personnel and fringe benefits of full-time highway and grounds employees. So for instance, how the General Fund supports recreation is that we have a, the Stone House, the utilities and everything like that, that comes out of the General Fund. The, it's the fringe, personnel and fringe benefits of a full-time recreation person, so that's David Friedman, he is supported out of the General Fund. The highway and grounds, how that supports recreation is that our highway and grounds people, the General Fund supports it by, the highway and grounds maintains all the grounds for all the soccer and all the fields and things like that. So that's how the General Fund supports recreation, and that's in your budget. The Recreation Fund supports the part-time people for all recreation programs, except for the golf course. So for instance, when we have the Recreation Funds, we have a yoga program, the yoga teacher is a part-time personnel, that's supported, it's problematic. So that supports, the recreation supports that part-time person. It also supports pre-actual services, so if you have a bus trip and things like that, that comes from the recreation support, Recreation Fund. Supplies for all recreation programs, so you have the art, you have an art program at the rec program, you have an art program that's run through the Recreation Department. The art teacher, that would be supported through the rec fund. The supplies for the rec would be supported through the rec program. But the building and things of that nature are supported through the General Fund. The Golf Course Fund supports everything. This is a standalone, currently. It supports our full-time golf maintainers, it supports all the golf course operations, it supports the part-time personnel to operate the golf course, and it supports the golf course supplies. So the golf course is a standalone operation, and it supports everything that has to do with the golf course. What are we proposing? We're proposing to include Westwood's in the Recreation Fund, and operate the golf course like every other recreational program. So you see, you have the General Fund, you have the rec fund, and then the golf course fund. We're proposing to merge the golf, the golf course fund into the Recreation Fund. What does, what does this mean? So we have the rec fund and the golf course, now they're the rec fund. So that means, again, the rec fund, as I described before, would have constructed pre-actual service related to recreation programs, which now includes the golf course, because the golf course is going to be considered a part of the recreation program. All the part-time personnel to operate all the recreation programs, including the golf course, and supplies for all recreation programs, including the golf course. So the rec fund is going to be treated the same way, it's just that the golf course is now going to be part of the recreation, and we're going to treat recreation, we're going to treat the golf course as a, in recreation. That's what we're recommending. There's one exception to this, and that's the fund balance. So what this policy states now is that the recreation, Recreation Funds in excess of 8% will go into a fund balance. After the 8%, that's going to be dedicated to capital projects, improvements that benefit the town's recreational services. The excess of the golf course revenue, that's not going to go into the Revenue Fund, we're proposing that that would go back into the General Fund to offset the cost of now the maintainers that are all now moving into the Recreation Fund. So you're going to see, what we're recommending is that all of the revenue from the golf course then now goes into the General Fund revenue, instead of, you know, Westwood's fund, it would be in the operating budget in the General Fund. So one of the things that we had worked on in our committee is that our, our town does not, had, when you benchmarked it with recreation, we did not, our operating budget did not support recreation, very, a very limited amount, the Recreation Fund. The recreation fund supported everything. And really, that is not best practices in recreation. Most times, the general fund supports the maintenance, the full-time people, those parts of the operation. The recreation funds in other towns, they support the part-time personnel, they support the, not the utility, the parts of the supplies. So, what we want to do is that we want to include Westwood as part of recreation and have the operating budget support the Westwood and the recreation. So, that's what this policy states, I hope.
Kathy, can you say that one more time?
Yeah.
That last sentence, just what supports what?
We want the operating budget now is going to support both recreation, and recreation now is going to have Westwood's golf course.
But recreation is under operating.
Recreation is going, you have two funds, you have a recreation fund, and you're going to have the operating budget fund. In recreation, though, Westwood is now going to be included in it. So, you're going to have the operating budget now supporting much more of recreation's functions. And what that, I think, what the benefit is, is that, and we've kind of, the pendulum has swung, is that during the years when it was very, very tight budgets, we've taken everything out of the rec operating budget, and we've put it into the rec fund. And we've charged for fees for usage. We were paying, our rec fund was paying our operating fund to have our maintainers go out and do the fields. It's very uncommon to do it like that. The government, the operating part, the taxpayers, they, in most towns, support recreation. They support the maintenance, the field use, the different things. Recreation supports the programmatic, the yoga teachers, different things like that. That's the common practice. So, we, over the course of the last few years, we've gotten our recreation excluding Westwood back to having recreation support, operating budget supporting most, and the recreation supporting what is more common. But now, now that we've gotten that back on track, we want to include Westwood and treat Westwood's golf course as a recreation program, and treat it like we treat every other recreation program. And that's what we're recommending.
So...
I know, the questions are going to fly. Go ahead, John.
So, when you described how the general fund supports recreation, you talked about the personnel and fringe benefits of full-time recreation employees being covered through the general fund.
Yes.
When you merged Westwood's golf course into the recreation programs, does that mean the full-time people who work at Westwood would now fall into the general fund?
Yes, under highway and grounds.
Okay. The second question is, I know Russ has described before how we utilize the Westwood's employees in the wintertime as more like town employees.
Right. And that's exactly one of the reasons why we want to do this, because functionally, our Westwood's employees are part of our public works department, just like our sewer employees are part of the public works department. And our Westwood's employees are used year-round as part of our public works department. And it's fluid, and they help with snow plowing, and they help with different things. So, that's one of the reasons why we think it's more appropriate that they're in the operating budget, just like our parks and grounds people are in the operating budget, and they're doing recreation services. They're keeping the fields trend for soccer and all the recreation programs, so they're in the operating budget, too. So, it's going to be a division of highway and grounds, just as you see in your budget, you'll see parks department, and you'll have the employees. Now, you're going to see Westwood's department, and you're going to see their employees. And then, in the back, in recreation, where you used to see soccer programs, cultural and creative, you're going to see Westwood. But on that side, you're going to see the golf pro, you're going to see the people that, the starters. You're going to see those types, just as you see a yoga instructor. You're going to see those types. But what's going to happen, then, is that the golf course revenue, because the golf course, you have revenue from the golf course, it's not going to go into a recreation fund. Instead, it's going to go back into the general fund to supplement the part-time, the full-time people that I just added into the budget. So, instead of going into its old fund, it's going to offset the cost into the operating budget. So, if you have to put X amount, $300,000 of employees in there, you're making the revenue up on the other side, and that's going into the general fund to offset that. And so, that's what the recommendation, that's what this policy states. Other, John?
So, the private money that comes into the golf course?
Like to play golf?
Yeah, fees, fees and whatnot, non-taxpayer money, private money, will it stay at the golf course?
No, that's what I'm saying, it's going to go into the general fund.
So, how is that perception going to be to the golfers? What if we, what if we need to raise fees or anything? Are we worried that there might be some sort of perception that they're funding yoga instructors by raising fees at the golf course?
Well, I think that, in general, it's going to be overall much better for the golf course, because now, the golf course, the golf course has been such a standalone operation that it's been difficult to fund the things that needed to be funded, and the capital improvements. And the same thing with recreation, because we've been draining those accounts and trying to run just through that, where I think now, we're going to have a system in place where it's going to help supplement the capital improvements that need to take place, and the different things, and we're able to keep the price like what we want to at a lower rate, as a municipal course, and we're not always trying to raise the price, raise the price, to try to do some of this. And it's run very much similar to how you would run any other recreation program. So, that helps. John?
Can I just jump in on that, one small point?
Yeah.
So, when I look at this, this is talking about the excess golf course revenue flowing into the general fund, like you just described. But I thought before you said the non-excess golf course would run into the newly-created revenue, recreation fund?
I don't know if I said that, I misspoke. Recreation, what you would consider regular recreation programs minus the golf course, is still going to go into a rec fund. But the golf course funds that are going to go into the operating budget. Joe, amazing, isn't he? Oh, Joe, help me.
So, that this diagram isn't right?
Yeah, that's correct. Basically, what will happen is the revenue from the golf course operation will go into the rec fund. Any money in excess of what the cost of the operations were, any revenue in excess of the cost of the operation will flow to the general fund.
Got it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, if the golf course raises $500,000 in revenue, and the operations are $300,000, $200,000 will flow to the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
That's why Joe's a finance director. Amy?
Just an observation, I, first of all, thank you for trying to get this together. Our policies generally are simple, and they make sense. This is coming off as confusing. What is the goal, that we want to properly fund our recreation and our golf course for our community, and make sure that we're not, like, barely squeezing every cent out of the penalty? Like, if the goal is to give the proper recreation to our town, why not just figure out all in what the cost is for recreation, including Westwood, and why not work it all through the general fund? I just feel like, and then the whole 8% excess, this is not that clear.
Well, what is different is because recreation in towns, let's get rid of, minus the golf course, but is run through a recreation fund and an operating fund, and the general fund.
Right. But it is and isn't, because some of your employees are paid for in the general fund, so, like, why not just keep it all simple?
Because, again, best practices, and I don't know, we could do it that way, but, again, we've done it historically in all communities that I know of do it this way, is that yoga instructors and things of that is funded. You run a program, and you try to make enough revenue to cover those programs, and that's that. But there are also lots of programs in recreation that necessarily won't make you money, okay? And so, you still want to have those types of programs. And you have sporting events, and sporting, soccer, basketball. So, all of them are historically in a rec, and you run a special revenue fund where user fees pay for them, and that's the case. But the general fund supports the buildings, the fields, and everything like that, supports everything. That's what our policy is today. That's what our policy is.
I just feel like we're splitting hairs and we're making...
But then, we're adding the golf course into it. And then, what, again, makes it somewhat complicated is that we don't want the golf course funds going in, the excess going into recreation. We want them to go into the general fund to help supplement that. And so, that's why it's a little confusing, because we want, that's where, that's, I think, the appropriate place to put it.
Is the goal that you want the recreation to pay for itself? I'm just trying to understand what your goal, I'm for recreation, I'm for having these services for our community, but this, what are you trying to do?
So, if I could jump in, what this is trying to do is to have, out of the general fund, setting up the organization to run recreation. It's setting up the field so you can run programs on the field. It doesn't create those programs. But what it says is that, when you take all that operation, and you now insert a program, the users of that program will pay for that program. They don't have to pay for the base fields, they don't have to pay for the recreation director, you know, they're going to pay for the extra funds that are needed to run that particular program. But the base, that everything operates on, is what's paid out of the general fund.
Then, why treat the golf course any different? How is it any different than yoga?
Well, that's what we have.
But then, why does some go to the general fund? I don't see why it's not all treated in the same...
I guess, why is the exception that we're putting the Westwood's excess into the general fund?
Again, there's no judgment, this isn't clear.
I thought it was to pay for the equipment that you wanted in the general fund, and not to pay just for recreation, for other programs. You wanted it to supplement, like, you know, a new mower, or you wanted to go into the general fund for that.
The general funds do a lot of that now. I think, let's be honest, golf courses don't make money anymore. They haven't been making money for probably the past 10 years, and ours is no exception, we're not making money. So, we've been subsidizing slowly. I mean, a few years, about three, four years ago, we moved all fringe benefits for the full-time employees, and so, we're moving in that direction. At the same time, you're generating more revenue, you're not generating sufficient revenue to run at a profit or even break even at the golf course, but you are generating revenue beyond what you need for just the operations, just the programming part of it. And when you sit down in a couple of weeks and look at the budget, you'll see the numbers, you'll see what the general fund is about to absorb, and add to the overall budget, and what it's going to do to your overall budget. And this is one way of transitioning those expenses into the general fund. Eventually, you may want to take that money and dedicate it towards capital projects. But the capital projects now are being funded out of the general fund, we have been doing that for the past couple of years. So, this is kind of taking, sending that money back to the general fund to soften the blow, absorbing those new costs that we got off of.
But Joe, as someone who's supposed to look at the finances of the town, I would like to know the cost to the town in full, recreation, which includes the golf course, and what the revenue is. That just seems simple, and I feel, but the way we parse it, like, some of it is in one fa, I just would prefer it to be simpler. And I feel this makes it more complicated.
But you will see that, and again, it's probably difficult to conceptualize now, but once we sit down and go through the budget in a few weeks, you'll see all those different components, and you'll be able to see how they flow together, or how they flow, and you'll get to see the cost of the programs. The other part of it is, we're trying to make more of a level playing field with this whole operation, too, in that, you know, when you compete against other programs where they don't have the overhead that we're requiring our recreation fund to have, we have to level the playing field, we lose playing field. It's kind of like, because we're charging a higher fee, because we have to cover overhead, whereas other programs don't have to cover overhead, so they charge a lower fee. So, that's another part of this whole thing. The other part is, you're getting to see what, it's kind of different from what Kathy said, but sometimes you offer a program for 20 years, and that program doesn't generate money, and it may not be a program people are used to anymore. And this is a better way of determining whether you want to keep that program or not. By requiring that, by raising those fees, or by having fees associated with the program, if the program's not generating the revenue, then why do you keep doing the program, or the program needs to be changed? So, that's another reason for doing the recreation part of it. But again, when we sit down and go through the budget next month, we'll be able to show you the flow, how the money will flow. You'll see the revenue on the general fund side, you'll see the expenses on the general fund side, you'll see the revenue and expenses on the recreation fund side.
Why the 8% equity balance going back to capital projects? Why do it that way?
Over 8%.
Yeah, but why, again, it's...
On the rec fund, it's standard, I always say to the council, that minimum fund balance you want is an 8% fund balance. So, in this case, there's a choice, and this is a policy decision, this is our recommendation. You can say no this, but the idea is, once we hit 8%, do you want to go higher than 8%? If you don't want to go higher than 8%, what do you do with that revenue?
I'm suggesting that you put it back to the capital.
Right. Our suggestion is that anything that, in excess of an 8% fund balance, be dedicated towards capital facilities, you know, fields, buildings, whatever we need to advance our recreation programs.
Explain the 8% again, what it means, where it generates from, what is it?
And again, it's the whole idea, we take in $500,000 in recreation fees during the course of the year, but we have a good year for some reason, we have a great year, we bring $500,000 in revenue, and our expenses are only $480,000. So, now, we have a surplus. We brought in 500, we only spent 480, we have a $20,000 surplus. Overall, we want to have, we want to have 8% of our operating budget be a fund balance, because here's some of what we do with the general fund, although the general fund, you know, trying to get you to go to 10%.
But this is for the rec fund now?
This would just be for the rec.
Okay, go ahead.
Every fund that is a major operation in the town should have a reserve or a fund balance of some level. Some don't, and some are small funds, you really don't care if they have a fund balance or not. But when you have a fund that's running to the magnitude that this fund will be running, this will be a plus of a million-dollar fund once it's combined together. So, you want to keep some type of a fund balance there for emergencies, it's going to be those years when you don't have a good year, where they're going to have to, you know, they're going to run a deficit for some reason, and the fund balance would be used to balance their budget or balance their operations.
But what I'm not clear on is, I need more to understand, tell me where the recreation fund, does it come from the programs, the money that Joe and Sally pay for to have the yoga, or to play golf, or to go on the bus trip? All of those, what I pay, is part of the rec fund? Okay, now, what the cost is to run the bus for the rec program, or to pay for the yoga teacher? So, we've got what comes in here, your revenues from the, and your cost is here. So, you're telling me that we take those two, then, and if there is the, if we have $100,000 more, then, or whatever, that then will become part of the general fund, which will be used, rather than keep it here, we're not...
Not in the rec fund.
We're not keeping it in the rec fund. It's not...
So, if you run over, if you run over, the excess...
Only up to 8%, though.
Will go into the excess fund, if it goes to a 9%, that will flow into capital projects dedicated to recreation.
Right, but the rec fund is comprised of what it costs and what the revenues are. So, that difference then gives you the additional funds, which are the 8%, if it's above that, okay. Now, does that mean that each piece of it, for instance, because it goes back to a piece Amy's, the golf course will then have a page still that says, these are the revenues brought in, these are the expenses, it will still have a page that shows us, so we'll see, it could very well make $100,000. I mean, in addition to, you know, but we don't, but we will still be able to identify that, that's all I'm asking. So, they're still going to be separate.
Yes, you will see, you will see, again, I mean, I have to completely flesh it out, if you will, but, I mean, it's envisioned now, you're going to see a page in the budget, and it's going to show you all the, if you're similar to what you see now in the budget, you're going to see all the Westwood golf course, you're going to see all the revenue items, and you're going to see, right below it, all the expense items, and you're going to see, you know, hopefully, you're going to see that there's $500,000 or probably $483,000 in revenue coming in, and there's $300,000 in expenses, and you're going to see a balance, a surplus of $183,000, which... a surplus of $183,000, which you're going to see a line that says donation to the general fund. And that'll be the budget, and hopefully that works out, and so on June 30th of 2017, you know, whenever I do the financial statements, that's what you're going to see happen.
Now, the staff, I'll call it, the staff of Westwoods now is still in that expense line? The expense of the staff-
The staff, the maintenance workers, the full-time year-round maintenance workers, plus all the expenses of cutting the grass, fertilizing, all that is going to be moved to the general fund. And you will see that in the general fund in the highway and grounds budget.
Right, so that's not considered an expense anymore to the golf course?
Right, that will not be. The expenses to the golf course will be the pro, the starter, the restaurant-
The clubhouse.
The clubhouse, the driving range, the golf carts, those, all these seasonal people who do all the, the range officers, all those people, those will be the expenses to the golf course.
Okay. What do you see, and you may not know at this point, you must have some general idea, but I'm not going to, don't get excited about holding you to the number, but, an idea of what that means that will be transferred? And I know full well-
I think you'd probably see a transfer fund golf course revenue to the general fund of about $180,000.
And that's people and benefits?
No, I'm sorry, that's the revenue.
Oh, no, I'm going somewhere else.
Oh, expenses, $400,000.
Okay, and that's?
That's full-time, that's the full-time permanent employees plus, I believe there's, we haven't finalized the budget yet, but probably two permanent full-time employees plus two eight-month employees, plus all the electricity, the fertilizing costs, all the costs of the maintenance of the golf course. It comes to about $400,000.
And is that what's there today?
Yes.
Those are the employees today? There are two full-time and two eight-month?
Well, we're in the process of recruiting right now and we still have to look at the budget, but that's what we have on the books right now.
So the maintenance of the golf course will be treated similar to the maintenance of Tungus Mead?
Yes.
Exactly.
Exactly.
So, and I think, one of the comments I have to make initially, because it's a huge thing to do this change, it certainly has come over a lot of study of what you think you need to do to make this work and make it run. And we have to, with this proposal that you have, it has to be understood and expected that there is going to be a significant change to the general fund in the percentage of your increase if this happens. It's a one-time thing, well, that's, I want to make, it's a one-time thing of coming from, of changing where it is in our budget, which increases your percentage out of the gate, which I think it's highly about time that this becomes part, because we have as a community in our strategic plan, and the community wants this to be part of our, you know, unlike Canton that sold their golf course, I mean, our community wants it there. And for us to be able to fund it and know it's going to be there and support it, I think, is the way to go. So I appreciate this new, you know, I mean, it sounds like you still have some things to work out, but the idea is certainly-
And the reason why we're bringing it now, and I know it's still, we're still kind of fluffing it out, but it's kind of like a chicken or an egg, because we want to show this at the budget time. And conceptually, if you feel that we're going in the right direction, when you see it, then maybe we could look at the policy afterwards, but I wanted you to see the policy and if it's clear to you, we want to approve the policy before we get into the budget. And so that's why, you know, again, I think if we had all the budgets in front of us, we could show it, I think it would be a little bit more clear. But in general, what we are trying to do is we're trying to treat the Westwood Golf Course like we treat the rest of the recreation. And we're doing that for a couple of different reasons, but one of the major reasons is that we treat the Westwood Golf Course as a standalone golf course when we use the maintenance people in the town and we use them as public works people. So we put the golf course operation in extreme disadvantage because we use the people year round. And so we treat our golf course as public works, as maintenance. And then for recreation, we really wanted to fully go back to how, what is best practices and having the operating budget support the buildings and these different things, because our recreation programs can't compete because no one else does it that way. And also, we're nickeling and diming our residents left and right, saying, you got to pay a field maintenance, you got to pay this. And I think that we're going to do away with all of that because it's going to be funded, the operating budget's going to support the necessities, and then the fund is going to support the programmatic things. And that's what we're trying to do in this policy. And it obviously still needs some work to make it cleaner.
Well, we're trying to understand, you know, it's-
Work it out.
Meredith?
I just, I think this policy is so positive for a couple of reasons, and the first is, one thing you just touched on, is because I think ultimately it benefits the actual users. It benefits the participants of the rec programs, it benefits the golfers, I just think it benefits the end user because all those, like you were just saying, the little fees and stuff, you know, now these programs will have the overhead built in, and I think it benefits the users. So I think that's a really positive focus, especially, you know, when we get to budget time and we're talking about, you know, meeting the needs of the community, I think that's a really, it's a good thing. And then also, this gets us to where we should be in terms of correct budgeting practice, which I know has been your goal for years, and it's one of the first things that we talked about when I came onto the council. So I think that's good too. I think the only hurdle is that this draft policy as written doesn't really say those things. So I think, I just think the draft policy-
Meaning what the overall purpose, what you've just said.
Or in general, could be just cleaned up or tightened or clarified or, I don't even know what the word is, but it does, I don't think it says what you're saying.
Well, you know what, I think, I agree, except that this is truly a financial funding policy, and that's what we've done here is the funding, and we've just bullet pointed that. We could, I think you're right, include really why we're doing it, what the policy-
Just even in the explanation.
Yeah.
I think maybe if the explanation was retold.
Right. And maybe, maybe if you would be willing, you could maybe work with us, because what you've just said, I think is perfect and we can add that in and kind of like, again, we just tried to get bare bones on the funding, and what you've described, I think, should probably be in this policy.
Other?
Just one question, just so I'm clear in my head. So we're going to take a one-time expense on the town budget side of 400, 380, 400?
Don't quote us on the numbers.
All right, some number.
Yes.
And then we'll know in a year from the revenue side, we're going to replenish that.
Well, then it's going to be part of the operating budget.
Right.
So it's already on the operating budget and you'll always see the revenue coming in, but for the first year, you have to add that number into the base.
Right, we're going to add that into our operating budget.
So next year, it will be in the base, so we won't see the-
And then you'll always see the revenue.
Yeah, then you'll see it on the revenue side in a year from now.
Yes.
Okay.
Kathy, just one more thing I'm just concerned about when you shift, I mean, accounting is always important, and I know in the end we'll get the proper accounting, but this idea that a certain portion is going to go to capital improvements specifically for recreational services, where all of our other capital improvements are part of a five-year capital improvement plan with real structure and goal, I just, how is this infrastructure going to work as to what improved and-
But it would, I guess, and if you, on the next goal that we have, the next goal is, is that then, what we've done in recreation and in Westwood, we've had very small, we've had five-year plans, but they haven't been what I consider extensive enough because we're always, we're not doing justice to the users because we haven't had the money and even the general fund. And now, we're going to come up with true five-year plans for the capital expenditures for the Westwood Golf Course, even, and for recreation, even though we've been doing that to an extent, it's, again, it's really a new philosophy and you're going to see a much more extensive, like in Westwood, all you've seen is equipment, because that's really all we could afford and barely afford that. Now you're going to see, maybe we should look at some different things in the golf course, like the irrigation systems, the pumps, the golf paths, and they've always been maybe one or two, but a true five-year plan on recreation. And that's the next goal that you'll see that we're working on.
But are you disavowing recreation because they need an extra, they need this extra money, but other capital improvements in our town don't?
No, it's just going to supplement.
It's going to, so we're, okay.
Yeah, because like, as you see-
I mean, do we do this with any other fund? That it's sort of a special-
Oh, yeah, like an O, you know, in our budget? So if we have excess funds, then let's say you're going to have, you're going to use some of those excess funds to help supplement the already capital budget.
Right.
And so you're going to do that, and so as funds grow. And we've always done that, except that recreation, the fund, is not growing anymore because we're using all the funds to supplement the overhead. And so that's why we're shifting us back, and now we're going to use the funds to help supplement the capital budget. So again, I will try to work this out.
When we talk about a five-year plan, it's going to be at the same level as everything else? And we're going to have the same analysis?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And that's just the most important thing for me, the same analysis, same level, same accounting. So we can, no matter what you call it, we see what the costs really are.
Right, and I think, taking what Amy said, and what Meredith said, I think that that's not described properly in the policy and that we can try to fix that.
John, you had another question?
Yeah, just on the excess fund.
Yep.
So the excess recreation fund. We're going to have that be created naturally. We're not going to overcharge the first year to create an 8% fund.
No.
So if the first year we break even, there will be no excess fund. That will be something that will happen over the course of time or not.
Right, exactly.
All right.
Exactly.
And just another thought, it seems, you mentioned earlier that it would, your hope would be that through this, we'd also see in recreation, things that are, I'm going to use the word outdated, but things that don't have much interest anymore, don't have and pay attention, I mean, that doesn't have to do with the golf course coming into this, but just that the whole rec fund will be treated in a way that's, you know, look at and see where we're going with that. But also, I see every year, we look at Westwood and we say, we can't afford to do XYZ. Now, I mean, we maybe do, as you said, a piece of equipment or something, but it's always, you know, it doesn't generate what it, to do the irrigation, like you just said, or something, whatever you need to do. But now, it'll be looked at, it appears to me more of a, what does the rec fund need? What is the golf, you know, and because it's general fund or because it's total capital, you're looking at that as overall, not how can we support it through the funds that come in?
Right.
Which is, you know, I mean, it'll get its due.
And as you know, I mean, this is, it's really been a long time coming of what the committee, how we've studied it.
Yeah, it's been a couple of years.
It's really, it's a change of philosophy, but it's really going back to best practices and then including the golf course in those best practices. And so we want to, I think that the timing is right, we're ready, and that we are ready to unfold this in this upcoming budget. And so that's why we wanted to talk about this as part of the strategic plan, and then as, not to have a large shock when we come up with a budget in March, that we have this kind of change of philosophy that we've been working years to really accomplish. And so that's where we are, and I appreciate your comments, and we can, we've been working hard to try to pull it together and try to make it so it's not complicated, but obviously, it has, it needs, still needs some work to get caught up by what we've said, what we really want to say in the policy.
Well, and I think that things have changed so much in recreation. I mean, we know through our strategic plan, and I think that's appropriate to be bringing it out here, that recreation is very important to our community. We heard that loud and clear, we made it another goal. I mean, so for us to pull out this and for you to be looking at this and how can we best move forward with this, I mean, I think it's absolutely timely to be doing all of this so we can look at and see what we need to do for the rec, the all recreation in town, which the golf course is part of. So, thank you. Anything else? So, goal number 28 is what we just talked about, is to develop a recreational capital plan for town council improvement. And that's just recommending, modifying the goal. The next goal was all the data that we have done with our recreation and golf course, and that was all part of just trying to get information to start recommending this policy. So we completed that, and that's why we've taken it off the goal and all our benchmarking. And then 29 is to develop the long-term strategic plan for the golf course, which we're very close to based on this policy and different things. And then when the capital project is done, that's really where we're at, we're pretty close to this now based on our policy. So I recommend that this goal to continue, I've moved it to priority one because we're, it's really happening right now based on this policy and the capital plan. Number, the next goal on 6.6 is the Rails to Trails section that could be utilized as a pilot program. And I put a memo together in your packet, and I don't know if you have any questions on it, but in general, I have concluded that a pilot program to provide community with year-end access to a portion of the Rails to Trails is possible. It's definitely a worthy endeavor that could be popular as well as well-received, it would certainly make Farmington unique in the Farmington Valley, however, it's a costly program to manage. The trails are not easy to maintain in the winter, their design and location creates unique challenges and liabilities, the cost of the program is not feasible within the current budget. Significant funding would be required in the upcoming 16, 17 operating budget to implement this program. But I'm not recommending at this time, the winter program on the Rails to Trails, there are some alternatives of the trail system that could be considered. Other locations in town already receive routine maintenance as the highway and grounds throughout the winter that could be suitable for winter use. Tungus Mead Park, the town hall and library, the Unionville Loop, the West Farms Mall, we could market these locations as recreation programs, saying a drop-in, come and walk, do some different things. And my thought was, is that if those programs really expanded and there was that much of an interest community-wide, then it maybe would justify the cost of going on to a rail, doing it on the Rails to Trails. But at this time, again, it's a policy decision, we could do it, I just think that it's, the way those trails are built, we'd be out there maintaining them all the time, and it would be really, really costly to keep them ice-free. And so my recommendation at this time is to delete this goal and move on. Okay.
I agree.
Kathy, it seems to me when we're talking about using the trails for winter walking, there are really two expenses. One is the expense of having somebody out there sanding and putting salt down and all those sort of things, and the other is the cost of liability. If we, if we put together a group of winter walkers who did the maintenance themselves, what would be the cost of the liability to the town?
Well, I don't know, again, what, I don't have that off the top of my head. The big issue would be though, is again, they, if we're going to open those trails, they have to be completely ice-free all the time. And even if we could really get a group of volunteers to do that, it would be very difficult to monitor because the liability would be so great that if someone slipped and fall, fell, we'd be responsible for it. But the, and the other issue is, is that it's not so, even if you could work past that, is that these trails are not built like roads, and roads are, so everything drains off of them. And these trails aren't built like that. So even when you're out there salting it, the likelihood of them icing up again very quickly because of their draining onto the trail is going to happen. So even if we had a set of volunteers, you'd really have to, like, you'd have to be out there all the time. It's not like a road where you go once through and really you don't have to spot-check it all the time. This, we'd be spot-checking it all the time. So I think that, that would even, I just, I'm not sure, even if we, I would, I'm concerned about employees going out there all the time, I'd be more, even more concerned about volunteers because I just think we'd burn them out. I don't think we'd, it would even be capable of having them out there that often, so.
Okay. All right. So goal 30. I recommend that we continue this goal, this is to have a public forum on our current plans for our Rails to Trails, and I spoke with Russ, and they're planning on something soon because they'd like to incorporate the new portion of the trail in there and show the bridge and some different things. Also, number 31, Russ has that on his projects planned to extend the Town Farm Road Canal Trail to the west side, so I said that he already has that scheduled coming up, so I feel that we should keep that on there so we can get that done. And number 32 is the bridge, and now we're just modifying that to complete the construction of the bridge.
Over Route 6.
Over Route 6.
So Kathy, if I could just jump in there-
Sure.
Sure.
And I'm looking at the area somewhere between 31 and 32. I'd like to see a goal to reestablish the Farmington River Trail on the west side of the river from the handicap fishing area going south. That trail used to be quite walkable, since the storms in the early part of the decade have, is not walkable anymore.
Where, John?
On Farmington Center, just west side of the bridge. There's the handicap fishing area there.
Yep.
There's a trail that goes there, goes north. And what it used to do is to go north on our property, on our open space, approximately across from where the Griss Mill is.
Yes, I know where you mean.
You can't walk it anymore. Because it's, there's trees down, there's things down. And so, one of the goals I'd like to see in here is to reestablish that. And I don't think it's a very costly thing. I think it's just a matter of getting some workers out there to do it. But that would really open up that side of the riverbank, which used to be quite open, and now it isn't. So...
Well, I'd like, before we put anything in, I'd like to know what it would cost us and what the availability you think, Kathy, with everything else that we...
Yeah, I'll talk to Russ about it and see what he, what he has to say. I'm not sure how difficult it is. It could be something that we could contract out, and maybe it wouldn't be that costly to do. Or our people could do it, if it's not that time-consuming.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think this is a huge thing, because it's not creating nutrients. It's just reestablishing that trail that's there.
Kathy, just as an aside, the Boy Scouts, there have been a lot of Eagle projects in that area. There are bridges that actually currently are down. But at one point, a Boy Scout did it for an Eagle project. If we're looking for other ways of other people to contribute, you get Eagles, or soon to be Eagles, come to you all the time with lists saying, what, what can we do for the town? That particular area? Because I've hiked that area. That is, that's not that complicated. And they've already, the scouts have, especially Troop 68, has already done things over there over the years. So, as, in addition to what John is saying, that, that's a perfect fit.
Yeah, I think that that's a great idea. Because I do know they're always coming and asking for the kinds of things can they do for the town. And that's certainly something that, maybe we can utilize that and not have to do the...
It's also a perfect fit with the whole Gateway Commission area, because that, that just opens up right to that location.
The second thing in this general area, and this goes back to an idea I had a few years ago. What I'd like to see is to have a goals to expand the Yadkin-Moore Memorial Park to provide additional river access and to add additional activity space. So, it's basically, we have a small picnic area off the park, down at the riverbank. There's a whole section of riverbank, which is nearly inaccessible, because there's so much under, brush and undercover. And if we can go in there and clean up that, that would be the type of river-access park that we have very few of. And that would be a good location for it, because we already, obviously, own the property there.
Well, again, I'd like to see what, you know, I mean, we, we could keep adding things to this. And this is already, you know, so I just, I'd like to see what, they're all valuable projects, but see what it would entail, because we can't overdo, we're going to have to set priorities.
Right, so, so I'm not, I'm not necessarily saying this should be a number-one priority. I'm saying that when we put things into this strategic plan as long-term goals, we tend to achieve them. And whether, whether it's something we can fund this year, or it takes a matter of using extra time over a period of years. What I'd like to see is to get a project like that into this plan, so we understand what our long-term view is. And when people come to us and say, we'd like more recreation, we'd like more river access, we have a plan that we can point to, and it's just a matter of getting, when the proper moment is to fund it. And I think that, you know, certainly when we talked about the project at Charles House, one of the big driving things there was going to open up some river access. And so, we have a lot of riverbank and not many places to get there. And I think the Yadkin-Moore Memorial Park provides a perfect access to the river. In fact, we already have it. This would just need to be expanded by cutting down a few small brush, that's all. And that's why I think it's important to include in the plan, not necessarily so we fund it next year, so it's in our memory that we do eventually get to it.
So, you'll find out what that, what the costs are. I don't want to add anything until we find that out. Anything else? Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor to, for this, for the plan. And we've made some modifications, and there are a couple that you're going to look into for next time. So...
So, I'll make the modifications, I'll look in for the information, and then we'll have that on the February agenda.
Right, as to whether we will add or not some of the things that are cost-effective, so.
All right.
But so, we should probably move to postpone this, then, until the February meeting?
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I'm getting that right, Paula.
Good job.
All right, I move that we postpone the attached Town of Farmington Strategic Plan Town Manager Goals until the February 9th. Is that the appropriate meeting, Kathy, meeting?
Yes, I think that's the correct date. I don't have my phone in front of me. February 9th, yes.
Seconded up?
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? Okay, we now have our debt forecast.
And this is going to be a presentation from Joe. I gave you some information last night, but Joe is going to go over to that. And he's also going to have some additional information, too.
All right, Stark.
Wait a minute, Joe, excuse me. Paula, do we need a motion to, we considered this. Do we need a motion to hear the debt forecast?
No, which is just part of the workshop.
Okay. Go ahead, Josh.
Oh, yeah, but there was a motion in there.
Okay. I just want to point out that, coincidentally or not, on May 26, the 2015, I gave you, I provided a debt forecast. So, this is eight months later, almost to the day. And actually, some things have changed very significantly since that time. So, what you're going to see is a little bit different from what you saw before. And, and just going to start with the debt, the debt policy. Everybody has the handout from last night. I don't want to go over the policy. Every time I do this, I go over the policy, and I'm sure everybody's memorized it by now. So, just to point out, we do have a policy. You did approve it at the last council meeting, or re-approve it without any changes. It still is in effect. It's what the policy that we're using, what we, we go by when we issue debt or when we plan our debt, our debt management, our debt strategies. And again, just two of our, two of the, one of the big things for us is, again, the maximum life of maturity is the useful life of the capital improvement, or 20 years, whichever is shorter, and that we, when we do refinancing, we never go beyond the original maturity date. So, that's why a lot of our debt is very short. This slide here shows, it's page four, shows what our debt was as of June 30, 2015. At that time, we had principal of about $39.2 million. We had interest of about $6.5 million. Total outstanding debt was $45.6 million. And we had BANS, short-term notes, what we call bond anticipation notes. Those were notes issued in anticipation of later issuing bonds. That was done as a stop-gap measure. We needed, we were running up against some IRS rules. We needed to finance, issue the debt. Otherwise, we were going to be in trouble at the IRS. So, our total debt outstanding at that point, June 30, 2015, was $46.4 million, $46,361,067. Since that time, we've had one bond issue. In November of this year, we issued what we called Series C. It was our issue of 2015 Series C, which means basically it was our third issue of the year. We did one in May, we did one, I'm sorry, did one in April, one in June. This was our third of the year, of the calendar year. So, at that time, we issued $2.1 million. That was for roads. That was the last million dollars of the last authorization. Back in three years ago, the council authorized $3 million. This was the last million dollars of that. We issued $100,000 against the IRA, IAR heating system. That's a $2 million appropriation. We only issued $100,000 on that. That was just to cover some expenses up to date. We also did the school improvements, the final $125,000. That was a $1.3 million project. We, the 125 finished the issuance there. And if you remember, last April, the council authorized and the voters approved a bond for $1.1 million for fire pumpers. We issued $250,000 of that $1.1 million. Those bids have come back, they're being reviewed. And I think they'll maybe coming shortly to the council for award. So, we, we issued $250,000 as basically seed money on that. And then, so, we cleaned up some open space projects, $625,000. So, basically, we had 2.1 million dollar sale. Those are 15-year notes, so we had a very good rate on that.
Upcoming sales?
Only thing in the pipeline right now for the rest of this year is a bond anticipation note sale. It's going to be for $30 million, and it's for the upgrade of the treatment plant. As council awarded the bid on that recently, we've been, we actually have a signed contract. We are about to award notice to proceed to the contractor. He should start breaking ground in March, and we're going to start needing to pay the contractor. We do have a cash flow estimate as to what we're going to need for cash for the next four years, or three and a half years. We anticipate that between now and next January, we'll spend about $30 million to the contractor. So, what the proposal is now is sometime, probably in April, we'll be issuing $30 million in short-term notes. They'll be one-year notes, and the interest due on those would be $300,000, based on the market right now. And what would happen is next April of 2017, the $300,000, we'd have to pay to the banks or to the borrower, and we would just roll over the notes into the following year. What that means is that, if all goes right, on June 30, 2016, June 30 of this year, we're going to have total outstanding debt of $71 million. So, basically, we're going to go from $46 million to $71 million in 12 months. Future debt in the next fiscal year, and right now, we have one bond issue, actual bond issue planned for next year, and that probably will take place this summer. And I'm probably jumping the gun a little bit on this in a couple of areas. But what we're looking at is, in a couple of weeks, you're going to see a request for another bond authorization for roads. And assuming it gets approved, we would finance $1 million for roads for the next year. We'll have the contracts awarded for the fire engine, so we'll need the remainder of that appropriation, $850,000. Open space, this is assuming, I do have, you did buy one piece of property, which we have to finance. You bought it last fall. And I'm assuming that, and again, if it doesn't happen, this would be less. But if you buy that piece of property, this is built in here, that you set the public hearing for. So, that's the $1.5 million for open space. It'd basically be the property you're looking to buy, potentially buy, and the one you already bought last fall. And then, the IRE heating, IAR heating system, that's, my understanding is the board will be doing something on that this summer, and we should be moving along on that. So, we'll probably bond that this summer, just to have that money in place for the contractor. So, in essence, what we're looking at this summer, we'll do a $5 million, $5.3 million bond issue. It'll probably, this one will probably be a 20-year bond issue. We'll probably go to the full extent on that, this, because of the amount of debt we're, we're going to be taking on over the next few years. So, that's, that's what we have in the, in the pipeline now, at this point. I'm sure there'll be other things coming along, but this is what we know of, or we think we know is coming, coming at this time.
Joe, if we get money from the open space, is where I'm going with this, for any, if we get any reimbursement from grants, how does, how does that work with this?
What usually happens is, what usually happens is we wait until, we, I usually don't issue the debt until the grant comes in. The problem I'm running into, and I ran into this big time last, or two years, last year, is a lot of these grants don't come in for a long time. And if I don't issue by a certain point, I run up, I run against IRS regulations. No, what happens is, we usually advance the funds for these projects, and then we finance, we do the financing after we know the exact cost of the project. What happens with some of these projects is because they're out there for so long, and they don't close for so long, we advance the funds, and then 18 months or two years goes by, and the IRS is, at this point, you can't issue bonds for that any longer. It's, you run up against IRS regulations. And that's been happening with some of our smaller open space purchases. So, what we'll probably do in this case is, if you know, if by the time you close, you know you have a grant award, and you know what the grant award's going to be, I would probably issue just the difference. So, if you know you're getting $500,000, I would just issue $725,000 or whatever, or $900,000. But if I don't know by the time of the, of the, at the time that you close, and the time I'm ready to issue bonds, I'll probably issue the full amount. And then, when the, when the grant does come in, I'll apply it to reduce the authorization or apply it towards the debt payments. So, it would, more likely, we'd probably apply it towards the debt payments and reduce them over time. But I'm not, and because of the timing and how, how long it takes to get the grants back from the state, we've, I'm going to probably just issue the debt and then wait for the grant later on. It's, it's just a timing issue at this point. It's, it, we're just running a file. We had, I think, three purchases where we, and actually, that was part of the note issue, that $725,000 note issue was because we were running against the deadline for issuing debt. Otherwise, the IRS was going to say we couldn't issue the debt. So, so, we had, we issued the notes just to cover ourselves.
And I totally understand that you have to do what you have to do. You have deadlines.
Right.
But does that, is that then, if the state isn't coming forward and giving us the grant soon enough, doesn't that mean that we're paying interest that we wouldn't have had to pay if we didn't have to bond that much?
Oh, sure.
Even if you, even if you're paying down the debt, so all of us, okay, now I've got the 500, I can, I can pay down debt. But in the meantime, we're paying the interest on that, on that amount.
Sure.
So, it would certainly be of us to talk to our legislators about letting us know as soon as possible, so that we don't have to incur on any kind of interest that we shouldn't have to, if they can do it in a timely fashion.
Right.
I mean, it's not you. Because if you don't do it, we don't get the money.
Right.
I mean, we don't get the grant, the bonding.
But it is a combination, though, and it's not that, again, the grants in general, it's sometimes at this, getting the money, but the process of receiving those grants, it's a very complicat, it's not complicated. It just takes a long time to get the grants. And if we have a lot of them going on, by the time we do the environmental, we do this, we do that, a period of time just takes place. So, it's really a combination of us at a staff level, being able to follow the numerous procedures to get the grants, and then also, we have to make sure that the grant funding comes in. So, it's a kind of a combination of both.
Right, and, and again, it's more the commitment, because once the commitment, once we do get the commitment, then it's a matter of, and we have that paper in hand saying, yes, you are getting X number of dollars. Getting the cash so much isn't a concern, it's getting that commitment from them. And that's where always the concern is. Because, again, if I have the commitment saying, yes, you are getting $500,000,
Well, then you can do it.
Then I could feel comfortable in not issuing that debt. I know at some point, I'm going to get the $500,000. It's just a matter of, you know, you wait to see how much you're going to actually get and when it comes in, and then you issue, like we've done in the past, and it just doesn't work. You start to run up against those deadlines. So, so, again, we have to, we have to adapt, or we have to readjust how we do things because of these outside influences.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's without, out of your control.
Right, exactly.
I understand that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. The other issue that we're looking at for FY '16, '17, is there'll be another note sale, as I mentioned. When those $30 million mature in April of 2017, we're going to roll them over, and we're going to add another $10 million to them. Again, it's based on the cash flow that we're seeing based on construction. So, in 20, in 2018, we'll actually be issuing, I'm sorry, in 2017, in April of 2017, we'll be issuing $40 million. So, in 2017, spring of 2017, we would do another $40 million in one-year notes. Rolling over the $30 million we had already issued, plus adding another $10 million to it. And again, forecasting interest rates, which I really hesitate to do... And again, forecasting interest rates, which I really hesitate to do, but we'll be looking at about six hundred thousand dollars in interest cost at that point. And again, those would be one-year notes, they would mature again in April of 2018. So now we're, you know, two years out. And what that does is that by June thirtieth of 2017, we'll have about, our, our interest, the principal interest will be about forty-two million dollars, our bands will be forty million dollars, and our outstanding total debt will be eighty-two million dollars. So at that point, so in summary, in summary, at the end of fifteen, we had forty-six million dollars in debt. At the end of this year, we project we'll have about seventy-one point four million dollars in debt, and at the end of June thirtieth of 2017, twenty seventeen, we'll have about eighty-two million dollars in debt. That's what we're looking at right now. What does that do in terms of debt service? If you look at the handout I just gave you.
I don't know what you hit there, Joe.
I don't know. I didn't think I hit anything.
Hit no.
Hello?
I believe that's coming from the computer.
Yeah.
The mouse.
Can you fix that?
Yeah.
It's timing.
So let's talk real fast.
Yep.
I haven't seen it before, I didn't touch anything. I promise.
Forty-eight seconds.
He's bored.
Joe, can I go back and, I wanna talk about this ban notion. So.
Where are you, John?
I guess it starts in, on page, I don't know, page four, but really, I'm really concerned with the bigger bands. You have a forty, a fifty million dollar project, and it's gonna take a period of years, and you don't wanna issue the final bonds until the end of the project. So what you do is to do, take out one-year notes, which you're calling bands. These one-year notes cover the incurred costs. But if you know that the project's gonna cost you fifty million, why don't you just take out the, take out thirty million dollars in bonds early on? Because you must be getting a lower rate.
Actually, that's a really good question, and what's gonna happen, it's because of the final way we're gonna bond this project. We're not gonna bond this project. We're gonna borrow, we're gonna take out a loan with the state of Connecticut. We're gonna take out a loan from the Clean Water Fund. And the way the Clean Water Fund works is they don't give you the loan until the project is done, and then they give you a loan for the exact amount that you spent.
Gotcha.
Okay? So they do offer, they do offer notes or temporary financing at the beginning, so we could actually go to them instead of going through the regular market and issuing bands. We could actually borrow temporarily from them, and what they will do is they will give us these temporary notes on a two percent interest basis, and then they will capital, they, and we actually wouldn't have to pay them any of the interest upfront. What they would do is they're gonna, they would roll it all into the overall project so that whatever, the one point eight million dollars in interest would then get rolled into the total project. So the project comes to fifty-seven million dollars, it would be fifty-nine million dollars, and we would finance it over twenty years. That's good in a high-interest rate environment. Right now, the forecast on these notes is the first note would probably be at a point at about point eight percent if we go out to the market. The second note probably be at point one percent if we go out to market, and maybe the third note, the third time we roll this over, it would be at two percent. So we're, we would actually save a considerable amount of money going out to the market ourselves instead of going to the Clean Water Fund for the short-term financing on this project. Once we get into the long-term financing, they offer a subsidized two percent rate. I mean, that's better than what we could do long-term.
Right. So the bottom line is that, for the next couple of years, we're gonna have, we're gonna be paying more money in, out of the budget, because we're not deferring that, those payments.
Right.
But when you look out in, I don't know, what's twenty years from now, twenty-two years from now, it'll be a better deal long-term.
Right, exactly.
All right.
Yeah, well, yeah, it should be a better deal long-term. Of course, when you look on this slide here, you probably, you know, you may not think that. Basically, what this slide does, it shows you what our, our debt service looks like over the next couple of years. And basically, it starts, when you start from the top, fifteen, sixteen, our existing debt service right now is six point seven, six point six million dollars. That's what we're gonna pay in, in the current fiscal year. And actually, we've paid most of it out already this year. In sixteen seventeen, based on what I just showed you, we're gonna have, our existing debt is gonna be five point seven million dollars in that first, in that far-left column. The issue that we talked about that we'll do this summer is gonna add about a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars to the, to our debt service, and then the band interest will be three hundred thousand dollars. So our total debt service for sixteen seventeen is projected to be six point one million dollars, which is actually a decrease from this year. If you look at, again, looking at existing debt from fifteen sixteen to sixteen seventeen, we're gonna go down substantially on the existing debt, but it's gonna get offset by the new debt issue and by the band interest. So that's another reason for doing it this way also, is because we are dropping debt off, we are able to absorb this now, we don't have to worry about it later on. And then, again, seventeen eighteen, we're gonna actually see an increase in debt service. We're gonna have a slight drop in our existing debt, we're gonna feel the full impact of the 2016 debt issue, that, that's gonna be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We'll have the band interest of six hundred thousand, so our total, our total debt service at that point will be six point six million dollars, which will actually be an increase from the previous year by four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And after that, you, you see increases in eighteen nineteen, a small one in eighteen nineteen, seventy-four thousand, and then in nineteen twenty, that's when the big, that's the projection where the big one hits. And, and that's all based on when the project's completed. The way the Clean Water Fund works is, once the project's completed, approximately six months afterwards, you owe them what they call your first debt service payment on the loan plus a balloon payment. Basically, one twentieth of the total project, I think, total cost of the finance, project financing, plus your debt service payments. So in nineteen twenty, that's like our, our big year, and actually, you're gonna see debt go, our debt service is gonna jump to about, to nine million dollars from, from, you know, the previous years, from six point seven million to, at this point, we're projecting nine point one million dollars. So that's two point four million dollars in that year.
What, Joe? Could you say that again?
Sure. In eighteen nineteen, from eighteen nineteen to nineteen twenty, our debt service is going to jump or increase by two point four million dollars. And that's basically, one, you're not gonna see, you're not gonna see a significant decrease in our existing debt. We're still gonna have the 2016 issue, we're gonna have some additional band interest, and then we're gonna have to start paying back the Clean Water Fund loan. And that's the two point, that's, I'm looking at the red line.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you look at the Clean Water Fund loan, you see our first payment, two point seven million dollars. And then, so our debt, our debt service that year will be nine point one million dollars, a two point four million dollar increase. That's the bad news. The good news is the green line right below it. You start to see a decrease in our existing debt again. We go down about six hundred, almost, about six hundred, I'm close to seven hundred thousand dollars. We still have the 2016 bond issue. Our Clean Water Fund contribution goes down, we're gonna lose about five hundred thousand on that. So our debt service will actually go down that year by two million dollars. So you're gonna see a one point nine million dollar decrease in debt service from, from the previous year. And then, again, you're gonna see a couple of years of decreases, the following year, twenty-one, twenty-two, nine hundred thousand, and then twenty-two, twenty-three, one point six million.
But that's just sort of illusionary, right?
It's, well.
I mean, because we're not, I mean, we're not gonna stop borrowing money for everything else.
Well, exactly. And this does, and that was my, my, my next caveat, it's gonna be, this does not include anything else that you may add in, in terms of financing over, over the next few years, any, any additional debt issuance for open space, for any other projects that may be out there. This is just basically known, this is based on existing authorizations, and it's based on, you know, what, what I know is in the pipeline right now. So obviously, just talk about a school, high school project, just talk about other things out there that they may add to this, but this is where, what we're looking at right now, based on, again, known things. I could fact, I could, you know, I could throw another twenty million dollars in here, and, and, but, you know, there's, that's up to you.
It's a good planning document.
Yeah, this is, this, yeah, this is, again, this is my, this is the planning document.
Yeah, yeah.
So can you have a document of over the past ten or fifteen years, on average, how much we've acquired in debt per year?
How much we've.
Sort of what is sort of typical, or are we all over the place?
We're, we're all over the place, actually. We've, I was, I was talking to somebody about this this weekend, and, and actually, who had some knowledge of the town fifteen years ago, and what they said to me was, you're doing what was done fifteen years ago. And I said, and, and I, so I went back and I looked, and I said, no, you're right. Basically, you went through a low, in the nineties, you had low debt, and then turn of the century, your debt jumped. You issued a lot of debt, we went up to eighty, actually, I think we went up to close to ninety million dollars in debt, and now we're going back down, and, and now we're gonna go, you know, we went back down, now we're going back up again. So it's, you know, I guess, they say history repeats itself, and, and really, that's what's happening.
We have our, we have a history of our debt payments, you know, that we give out, and if I remember in the height of our debt, I don't think we ever hit ten million dollars in debt payment out on the budget. We were at the high in the nines, nine million, nine million dollars.
Ratio-wise, looking back, we did have some years, and I've talked about this before, one of the ratios is you don't want your debt service to exceed ten percent of your operating budget. And right now, assuming the budget increases at a certain level each year, and based on this scenario here, we should not hit ten percent. We have hit ten percent in the past, there have been years, four, five, probably five, six years ago, we were above, we were above ten percent, we were in the eleven, high eleven, you know, between eleven and twelve percent. We've gotten it down, and we're down around eight now, or actually, I think we're under eight at this point. Even, even with this, a bad year, or this, this large payment coming in, building it back up, we should not hit ten percent. And, and that's actually, that, that's good from the sense that, it's good with the rating agencies that we don't exceed ten percent. You know, the other part of it is, I'm not sure if, it's up to you whether it's good in terms of what it's gonna do to your tax rate, so. It's, obviously, it is gonna impact your tax rate. I didn't do anything based on the tax rate. Like, I know back in May, I did, but at this point, I was just too uncertain as to what's, what's taking place. I think at some point, once we do it, our, our notes, our band sale, and we know where we're, where we're heading for the next year, I could, I'll do another forecast and show you what, what's the impact on the tax rate.
Do you look at the, you probably can't at all, are, the revale coming up, I mean, do you have any expectation of what that means?
Um, yeah, that's, that's a real difficult one.
Okay.
The good news is that, in May, I tell you that the revale and this big payment we're gonna hit the same year. So, so that was the bad news. The good news this year is, it's not, based on this forecast, that won't happen. The revale's gonna hit in eighteen nineteen, and the large payment for the sewer plant will hit in nineteen twenty. So actually, the, somewhat of the delay that's taking place on the construction and the projected completion of the plant is gonna push that out, push that payment out so they won't, they won't collide. You know, we're, we're probably gonna see growth in the, in the revale. It's, it's not gonna go down like it did the last time, but it's not gonna go up, you know, like it, like it used to. We're, last time I looked, it was twenty, I think it was the twenty thirteen grant list, looking at sales ratios done by the state, we were at about sixty-eight percent of market value, so which means that, we have to be at seventy percent of market value, we were at sixty-eight percent of market value. So values are increasing, but they're not, you know, they're not increasing, you know, where it's gonna be like a twenty percent increase in people's assessments. So, so you probably see a, you'll see some, you will see some increase. I've been talking to your sister about this year, and she's seen some positive growth this year, and you'll probably see that going forward. So I think values will probably increase slightly when you, when you see the grand list, the revaled grand list. It, what's gonna be difficult, too, with this, as Kathy mentioned during the goals, is that this is not a full inspection, this is, let's look at sales, and we will do inspections of, I think we're gonna do at this point, depending upon the budget, we'll probably do inspections of, of, of sales and whatever, you know, took place in sales, and we also wanna do an inspection of commercial property as much as possible, depending upon our budget, and that'll help with, with getting a good handle on the numbers. But a lot of the actual setting of the values is gonna be statistical, it's gonna be based on sales, it's gonna be based on what, what happened in markets, what happened townwide. So, you know, it'll, it'll probably, depending upon how your sales went, or how our sales went in the past eighteen, eighteen months from October one, twenty seventeen, you know, will determine how well our grand list grows.
So the next year or two, we should be bonding for more roads, quickly.
Yeah.
You don't have to answer that. That was just a.
So, so Joe, the, the bands, which are aimed at the sewage treatment plant and the clean water loan here, are these, these numbers that we're looking at, how do they, how do they work with the payments that we're receiving from the other towns?
That will happen afterwards, and actually, these numbers, again, these, the Clean Water Fund loan numbers that you see here are net of the assessments from the other towns. So the actual payment to the state is much larger than that. It's, that's actually our, let me grab a file.
But if I'm looking at the band number, I'm paying out three hundred thousand in a couple of years, is the band payment actually more than three hundred thousand?
I'm sorry, that, we're gonna have to pay that upfront, but what we're gonna do is we're gonna roll that into the assessments, and that's gonna help us later on with the...
So we're gonna pay the full freight in the early years, and they're gonna pay more than the full freight after that.
Right, exactly. What, what's gonna happen is, we're gonna take, for example, to give you another example, any expenses that we incurred up, up until the time of, of the Clean Water Fund loan, and there, there's numerous, for example, the design of the project was three million dollars, that was paid by the WPCA through their user fees, that will get rolled into the cost that the other towns will have to share. The band interest will get rolled into the cost the other towns will have to share. So anything that we've paid for out of pocket, they will also be responsible for paying for. So, but just, and to give you an example, the actual, the actual first payment to the state of Connecticut for the Clean Water Fund loan is three point six million dollars. So, and, you know, we're looking at our net assessment is.
Two point seven.
Is two point seven, two point eight. So all the rest of it is through assessments, and it continues down. The annual payments after that are in the, in the three million dollar range, and we're paying, you know, two point two, so.
Yeah, okay. Joe, a couple of things I just wanted to comment on is that, I think that it should be noted that, you know, you and the town council and us, we've, we've worked really, really hard to get, to pay off our exist, our debt, to bring it down with the thought that we're taking on the sewer treatment plant. And I think that even though the numbers sort of move in the years, this is a really good planning document for us to look at, because it gives us, shows us where we have the capacity to really fit in debt. And as we've talked about year, for the last couple of years, on this schedule now in twenty fiscal year, twenty twenty-one, we've really seen a decrease in debt, and as you've kept on telling us, that a lot of debt, it continues to decrease. Yet, granted, there may be other projects, but we, you know, that's ideally in a perfect world where we would want to put the capacity for a larger debt project, I think. And again, it's not a perfect world, and we'll have to deal with it as time goes, but, you know, we've planned based on our debt and taking off as substantial. We always knew we were gonna have one hit, and that looks like it's in nineteen twenty. But we really have to look, if that number moves, if we are taking on a significant project, we really, it behooves us all not to have it at the same year that that debt is going to hit us. I mean, I think we have to really look at that, because, you know, with the high school project and things that are coming up, having it in nineteen twenty, having some sort of debt of that magnitude with it increasing two point four million dollars is going to be really, really difficult for the town to absorb. So I think that this is a great document for us, and that we, you know, with the debt coming off, and, again, things can change, and it's a fluid document, but I don't think we see anything really much larger than a, a high school project coming in, and really, that's the time, if we could, having, you know, we just don't wanna have the debt hit at nineteen twenty, according to this, I would think. You know, that's gonna be very difficult to absorb. It's gonna be very difficult.
And, and again, this is a planning. And, again, this is a planning document, this is what we're forecasting over the next five to 10 years. You know, and, again, I have copies of the May 26 forecast they gave, if you want to compare to what I just did to that, and there's some significant differences that, you know, one of the things was, when I, back in May, I said I was going to have, I was going to have bond issues of certain sizes at certain times, and actually, what's taking place is just the opposite. I thought I'd have a $5 million sale in the fall, and a $2 million sale next summer, and just the opposite's taking place. I had a $2 million in the fall, and we're going to have a $5 million next summer. It depends, a lot of it depends on spending, timing of expenses, and, you know, and how projects go. And so, you know, this could get delayed, you know, if this contractor on the plant turns out to be great guns and just takes off on this project, he could turn a three-year project into a two-year project, or a two-and-a-half-year project, and, you know, we're back to where we, and we're moving everything up a year. Or, he could delay, you know, he could get pushed out three and a half or four years. But, so, a lot of times, it depends on what's, how the projects are going. You know, I don't control the authorization of debt, I control the issuance of debt, and there's a big difference. You control the authorization of that, you and the voter. So, you tell me what you want to spend or what you want to issue, and then I make it work. So...
But it's good to know that we're, I mean, we need to discuss what the opportunities or disadvantages are as well, like we see in this document.
Right.
You know, what's the advantage to the town to come in at a certain time as opposed to another year, you know? And, I mean, that's something I think we, as a council, have to, have to really deliberate, I mean, really think about and see. And as you said, you expected this to be a year, you know, if it does come in the sewer differently, it changes this whole thing.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. But, again, it's, you know, I base everything based on projections as to what people tell me is going to happen and when it's going to happen, and then it's up to people to make it happen, and then I work off that, so...
I mean, we know you always keep in mind, and you have to keep us apprised of AAA rating, all of the, you know, what does this potentially mean, and, you know...
Right.
As much as we know that, you know, you don't have your crystal ball, but you give us guidance to hopefully make some good judgments about, for the town, so, as best we can, too, you know?
Right. And, again, you have to balance everything against the needs of the town, too.
Yeah. Yep.
Joe, one little thing, just really a nit here, but just want to understand what you're going through. Normally, you're looking to borrow money for the maximum of 20 years, but you're really trying to look at the useful life of things. So, something is going to be only useful for 10 years, we can only borrow money for 10 years.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
When you did the July Series C, you borrowed it for 15 years, but as I'm looking at these items, they're going to, open space is going to last for 20 years.
I don't think I did, I thought I did 20 years.
Oh, I thought you said 15 years, that's my, I noticed.
No, I said I normally would do 15 years, but I think, I normally do 15 years, but on this one here, it projected 20 years.
Okay, I misheard.
What I did on this one, this is a 20-year, I don't know if it's positive, I... Yeah, I don't have it here, but I...
That's all right.
Here it is. It's a 20-year.
Okay.
And, again, there's some flexibility in that, too, or some, I don't want to say play with that. And this particular bond issue, for example, what I did is, when I created the amortization schedule, I, you're right, I said open space is going to last forever, let's do it 20 years. So I took 1.535 divided it by 20. I said, roads, 15 years divided by 15, fire engines, 15 years divided it by, heating system, 20 years divided it by 20. So, basically, did a, you know, balanced it out, straightened it out, or leveled it out, I guess, I should say, using that type of the amortization schedule by project. But overall, the average, the average life for this product, this would probably be close to 18 years, 18 and a half years, a lot of it, majority of it being 20 years. So...
But you mathematically package things together, which have a different useful life.
Yeah. On this one, I did. Normally, I don't. Normally, nine times out of 10, it would be a 15, right now, it's a 15-year. And I, as I think I've explained before, a lot of the 15-year issues that we've been doing in the past four or five years is with the idea that I needed to level out our debt, and I needed to, our debt service over the next 10 to 15 years, because of things like the sewer project coming onboard. I wanted to get a lot of that upfront, so that at the back end, we would have capacity, like having stuff drop off, so that we do have capacity in keeping it. I wanted to keep everything, again, the goal is to have level debt service, and the level debt service into this town is $8.5 million, you know, $8 to $8.5 million. And if we could have level debt service at $8.5 million, or, you know, some people would argue 10% of operating budget, you know, that's, my goal's always been $8 to $8.5 million. So, when I do a bond issue and amortization schedule, I look at where I have openings, and I try to keep it level.
All right, thank you.
Other questions here? Okay, well, thanks a lot, Joe.
Just because I warmed up for the budget session.
Yeah.
Hopefully, when I come in with the debt service for budget, it'll be the same thing.
Thank you.
I move that Michelle Hamilton be appointed to the Farmington High School Building Committee as the Board of Education Representative, beginning immediately for an indefinite term.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, can I have a motion to move to executive session?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters concerning the sale or acquisition of real property, and that attendance in the executive session be limited to members of the town council and the town manager. Am I doing land acquisition first?
Could we do collective bargaining first?
We can switch.
Erica, and then Joe can go.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Strike that. I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters concerning collective bargaining, and that attendance in the executive session shall be limited to members of the town council, town manager, assistant town manager, police chief?
No.
No. And director of finance and administration at 9:16 PM.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.